Well, good evening and welcome to our work session for Monday, March 1st, 2021. Tonight, the topic for 50 minutes will be a continued discussion of the mayor and city administrator roles. And with that tonight, I'll be doing some presentation work and Attorney Rogers will handle some other parts. So Attorney Rogers, you had requested to go first, correct? Do we have you, Attorney Rogers?
Mayor, could you cut out there at the end for me?
There's some chirps and then you were kind of quiet to start us, so. No, same as it, same here.
So for Attorney Rogers, if you would like to start us off with the discussion tonight?
I heard that. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, what we have for work session is on referral by council after the council considered some ordinance changes and tabled those matters. And so what you have in your packet is a chart that I prepared. And it's just the basic outline is the mayor duties are on the left, the corresponding same or similar city administrator duties are on the right. The middle columns that says CF Ord and State Code, those are which duties of the mayor are included in the Code of Ordinances. And then of those same duties, which of those duties are prescribed by the Iowa Code. That's why the heavy black line is in there to the right of the State Code. Those refer to the mayor duties, not to the administrator duties. For this evening's discussion, the dark gray shaded is not being considered for any changes, mostly because, for the most part, those are duties that are prescribed by the Iowa Code. And so the basic law in the area is that the Iowa Code prescribes certainly certain duties and obligations on the part of the mayor. Those cannot be changed, of course. Otherwise, the Iowa Code says that city council is free to prescribe the duties in function of its city officers, including the mayor and the city administrator, as long as those duties do not conflict with state law. And so what, what we did is we kind of took a step back and, according to the referral, and just wanted to present to council the only the duties of the mayor as compared to the duties of the city administrator. And depending upon what you decide here, it may necessitate some code changes in terms of mayor duties and city administrator duties. But regardless of the changes you decide to make, if any, the mayor would remain CEO of the city and still oversees all the functions. As I understand it, what's going to be discussed, and I'll turn it over to the mayor in a minute here, is basically to reflect what current practice is and not to introduce some sort of wholesale changes in the way that Cedar Falls actually operates. Once this process is all complete, then if the council decides to do any changes with any of these functions and duties, because the chart outlines what's in effect right now, if any of that is changed, then any ordinance changes brought back will only relate to these duties and not any general clarification, just concentrated only on the duties. And I think with that, I'd turn it over to Mayor Green.
Thank you, Attorney Rogers. So looking at the, the code of how it's written, and you have a copy of that in front of you for the, for the mayor and administrator, I just printed it out from the City Code, just as a reference. If you're, if you're looking online, or if you're not here in the onsite, you can look at these on MUNACODE on the city's website that's posted there. But we'll be referring a bit to this, as well as to the, the chart that Attorney Rogers had put together. And, and my goal here in, in bringing this forward, and I think it was from the intent of, of the referral too, was just to do housekeeping on the mayor and administrator roles. So that, to Attorney Rogers's point, we're not looking to change anything in this, the practices, but we're just looking to clarify so that it, it actually matches our, the code matches our practices. And some of these, I'll just note, go back at least to the 1927 version of the City Code. I mean, these aren't new items. And I look at some of these, like the making arrests, that was from 1927. I don't believe that I would be in a position to make an arrest and wouldn't want to. But if that's the case, then I believe the code should be updated to reflect that. So I'll entertain for how council would want to proceed on this, if you'd want to go over specific parts, or just more of a general discussion.
Well, we could just go down the list and see if we have any thoughts on any of them, throw them out there. That probably seems like the most logical way to do it, if everybody's okay with that.
Sure. So would anybody object to doing the, just a walk through of the items that are in white on the chart that Kevin put together? Okay, so, and I'll just state off too, the, the chief executive officer at the top, that's the most important thing that the, the mayor has authority over, and that that's all encompassing of the execution of city government. So there's no desire, it would be against State Code to change that. So that's not even a consideration. But it lists in here from the old 1927 code, being a conservator of the peace. And along with that, it talks about suppressing disorders, making arrests, and issuing process for arrests. So I would, I would recommend changing that under section 287-1, where it says generally, the mayor shall be a conservator of the peace. If I just, if it's just listed as the mayor shall be the chief executive officer and shall be his duty to enforce all regulations and ordinances, that would cover that. And so is there any, any desire to, to keep in that conservator of the peace specifically? As far, and, and we're just looking for consensus, certainly not a vote, but to see what we want to bring forward in a committee of the whole. And this is just open discussion, so feel free just to chime in. And especially for Zoom, I might not see a hand raised. So feel free to comment in. Now, the bigger part is the making arrests. And that's specifically listed in the first part in that section 287A. And I would like to remove that entirely because where it says, may, upon view, arrest anyone guilty of a violation, that's, that requirement is contained elsewhere for the, for the city government. And I, Attorney Rogers, would that be something that I even have the authority to do? Or, and, and also to Director Olson, does that even make sense to include anymore?
I don't think it does, Mayor. You know, if the ordinance provides that, if council chooses to leave that in place, the practical application would be clearly you'd get law enforcement professionals involved in that. Otherwise, it's not much different than a citizen's arrest. You're not a sworn law enforcement officer. So I don't think it makes much sense to keep it in there.
Would anyone on council believe it's important to keep it in?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that you keep all your powers. When we have a mayor in charge, he shouldn't want to give up any of his powers. He was elected to that position. The reason that they did it in 1927 may be different today, but I wouldn't, you as mayor, I wouldn't want to relinquish any of my powers.
So are you saying that I should have the?
I think you should have the right to do all these things that are listed, that you should be able to do when you got elected mayor. That's just what I believe.
But do you think it's important that I have the ability to arrest people? Do you think it's?
It's, it's not the importance of it, it's giving up power as a mayor. You were elected to be the mayor, and you were entitled to all these duties and all these responsibilities to cut your position back. I don't think it's a good idea.
Does it cut, but that's the question, is does it cut the position back?
Well, I don't know. But somewhere down the road, it was given to the mayor in 1927. So it must have been important then. I, I'm just old school, you know? We follow the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and all those things, and they were written a long, long time ago. I think when you.
Thank you. Pretty quiet there. Can you hear him?
I can't hear, I couldn't hear Dave at all.
I can't hear a thing either.
I just think that the mayor should retain all of his powers. I, I think those were the things that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Can, can you hear, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine. And can you hear me all right?
Okay. I don't think any of us out here could hear anything that Dave was saying. And so I don't know if he used to speak into the microphone or exactly what, but I, I'd like to hear what he had to say. So.
It's very, very faint.
Can you hear me now, Frank?
It's very hard to hear the mayor, too.
Frank, can you hear me?
We can hear the people that are on the Zoom outside of city council, but not inside city council.
How about if we make some decisions and get back to them?
Let's put them all on Zoom in the chambers there, and then we'll be good to go.
Well, I, I'm, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to continue the meeting if you can't listen to members.
Could Daryl try speaking more into his microphone?
Can you hear me, Frank?
Dave? Could Dave speak into his microphone?
Frank, I'm speaking into the microphone. Can you hear me?
I can now, yes. How about Daryl? Can you hear him?
Yeah, faintly. I got my laptop up to top volume and I can.
So, so speak into the microphone, Dave?
I will. I just believe it's important for the mayor to keep his powers that were granted to him by generations ago, or whatever it was. I think that's one important thing about being the mayor and being the chief executive officer, is he should have all of his powers. That, it was very short. I'll just shorten it up to that.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Miller?
I can appreciate the historical relevance of it. I kind of like reading through this stuff for the fact that it was written in 1927. But in this, today, the mayor isn't going to go make an arrest. So I think the whole point of this is to simplify this, so everybody knows exactly what the roles are and what they aren't. So to your first point, I think keeping the chief executive officer statement in there and taking the rest of it out's valid. It's unnecessary, whether that, you know, as it's listed in Kevin's spreadsheet here, the conservator of the peace, suppress disorders, make arrests, issue the process for arrests. I, I don't know how necessary that stuff is.
Not, not only is it not necessary in the ordinance, it's, it's not how we function.
Exactly.
So if it, if it's not how we actually function on a daily basis, then having it in the ordinance is just confusing and redundant, in my opinion. So I would echo what Council Member Miller said. And at least for the top of the general, the, the three white sections on, I would say, conservator of peace, make arrests, and, and issue process for arrests, I'm okay with them changing those up.
I agree. Sorry. Sorry, Frank. I agree with what you guys just said, because you're not giving up power, because you're still the chief executive officer. We're just cleaning up stuff that's not relevant to today's functionality.
And Councilor Dara?
Yeah, and maybe we need to go through each of the items, but as I looked at them, I, you know, certainly some of those are the function of the mayor, as I don't want to use, I don't want to diminish it and call it to figurehead. But there are things there that you would represent, you know, staff would make a decision, and you might carry it out, or you might represent the, the city in carrying out that function. So I think keeping, somewhat going through them and looking at which ones just don't make any sense at all, like making an arrest. But, but then representing the city in other ways, but not being the person to make the ultimate decision, as much as, and that, to me, it's a lot like the councilman, councilperson's role of having the professional staff, you know, doing that work under the supervision or with the support of elected officials, especially the mayor. But to me, it's, there's some that could be taken out and others that could just be you representing the decision of the professional staff, the mayor representing the decision of the professional staff, and separate those out.
We have a council member on the floor, so we'll let him figure.
Any comments? Did that make any sense?
Sorry.
Yes, we, we heard you fine, Councilmember Dara.
No, hearing me and it making sense, I was just curious if anybody had thoughts on that.
Looks like not. So, and that's, the one reason I wanted to talk about that as a, as a particular, particular item was looking overall at the, the role of the mayor. As I understand it, for that next line where it says enforcing, the mayor is responsible to enforce all regulations and ordinances, to, to Councilmember Dunn's point, that, that is the mayor's primary function, is to ensure all the laws are enforced. And we do that through a law enforcement organization with special powers and, or, and understanding of the law. But at the end of the day, as the chief executive officer, it falls on me to make sure that that's happening. And, and it would, I, I don't see a problem with having it in the administrator duties to enforce ordinances and regulate resolutions. But at the end of the day, that's my bread and butter. And also, it's kind of like a, a national president, when you look at the separation of powers, where I see the, the mayor, the role of that mayor is not to, to create laws and not to create policies, that's really the council's area, but to provide recommendations and information and ensure that the, the city staff is doing that for you, to give the information you need to make policy. And so I've, I've been really careful during this year, I hope really careful, to not overstep my role of being the, the executor of the law. And, and there are some other things in here that we'll talk about that maybe aren't clear, that the administrator does now without council input, where I feel it's important to have the council as the approver of how the government's going to operate. And if, if I'm operating, or if the administrator is operating in a way that's contrary to what the council wanted, and it goes against the, the rules, then I'm, I'm out of bounds. I'm doing something wrong and need to be called back for it. But if there's, if there's leeway, or if there's, it's open-ended, then I'll use the authority that I've been granted to, to make decisions. So open to thoughts on that. Is that, is that different from how you see the role? Like the difference between the, the council and the mayor and the administrator?
Well, from, from what I could hear, there's a lot of background noise. But I don't disagree with the back to, maybe by just, for me, adding a word along some of these items, ensure that arrests are made, or ensure that these things hap, I mean, as a mayor, you're wanting to monitor that, but you're not, you don't deliver it. But your bottom line is if, your staff needs to deliver it. So as the chief administrator, head administrative officer, ensuring that those things happen, but the way they read it, it sounds like you're going to do it yourself. That, that'd be my only caveat. And since I can't hear anything, I'll also stop talking.
Okay, so another, another aspect down here, where it talks about negotiations and contracts and deeds, there is some overlap, but I, I don't have any, there hasn't been any problem with it. We seem to have known for the administrator and me which things we're signing and which we're not. Like I don't do, of course, event permits or things like that, but some of that's already done down in the code. But down into the, the prepare and submit budget, that is an area where I, I think there could be some confusion between what I do as the mayor and what the administrator does. So I'd want to talk about that. And this is a big question about what you're, what you're looking for from the mayor in this. Because for the administrator, it states, if I go down to, yeah, on the, the main, the document that has all the, the ordinances and stuff, it's down to line, I think it's page, yeah, page five of seven, it's part 20. It says, prepare and submit the annual budget and capital improvements program to the mayor for review based upon approved city council goals, and then implement the final budget as approved by the city council. So that is kind of an overlap in my mind with what the mayor's responsibility is in the code, where it says, the mayor shall annually prepare and submit to the council an itemized budget of revenues and expenditures. And that's, that's on page two of seven. So which is it? Like who, who prepares the budget then?
It should just take out prepare, should it not? Submit the budget to the council? Under the mayor's duties?
Okay, could we, could we tie that to the administrator and have it as the, shall annually review and submit? And then that way it's?
Sure.
So that's, yeah, that's kind of an easy one. But I just want to make it clear that I don't, I don't feel like it's my role to prepare and to be in the weeds of the budget, but just to know what's coming forward and to make suggestions and, and even direct changes if necessary, if I, if I feel that it's needed. But ultimately, it's the council that, that makes that approval.
Doesn't that get into the weeds a little bit, if that review is still allowed for the mayor? I mean, essentially, the council sets the direction for the administrator. He submit, puts that all together, submits it to the mayor. And if there's a line in there about a review, couldn't, couldn't a mayor hold it up right there and say, no, I want this?
Yeah, that, and that's a, that's a great question. It's very open. Like, is that, is that what council would want? I don't have a preference either way of me reviewing and going into it. Or is it something that, that from when the administrator position was created, are you expecting it's going to go from the administrator, basically to me as a pass through? Or is it just to the administrator, straight to the council?
Well, I think it should go through the mayor. I mean, that's part of your role. But at the same time, it ultimately is the council's document. So, you know, I, I think you can get into, if somebody really wanted to play a game there, if you will, the mayor could hold that up right there and say, no, I want this to happen. And then where's, what's the council going to do? Force the action? Or force it, I would assume?
Yeah, I think it could with the, the four vote, to put something on the agenda without the mayor wanting it. That's certainly the, the council's, it should be the council's prerogative.
Yeah, the council could have it put on, but also then they could amend the budget to what they wanted and pass it. So.
Sure. But it ultimately, I mean, why even leave a loophole for it, I guess is what I'm getting at. I mean, it's council's document, so.
I'm okay either way, because the way it seems to happen is that Jen has, you know, most of the, the budget work, she does all, which you do a very good job of, by the way. It's a huge packet, and then she hands it off. And I'm sure Mr. Gaines has a lot to do with it as well, not trying to diminish that role. But I think when it says prepare, the mayor shall annually prepare, that reads to me like he's actually doing it. And I don't even, I, I think I would be comfortable even taking that out of the mayor's, you know, taking it out completely. I don't see why, why you would leave it at all.
It's the same thing. It's a duplication.
Yeah.
It isn't the process.
Exactly. It, it doesn't, it doesn't happen that way now. So why is it, why is it in there? I'm, I'm fully for adapting and being fluid and modernizing.
And again, I mean, to be clear to somebody else stepping into the role, this is super confusing.
Yes.
I mean, without any background of how the system works. So let's make it as clear as possible. And again, I think making sure those roles are drawn out as clear as they can be, considering how confusing government is anyway. I mean, it's submit the budget to the council. And, you know, whether you've got a very involved mayor or not involved mayor, I, I would assume the mayor's going to review that budget, but.
Yeah. And, and the mayor can veto. I mean, it'd be pretty awful to get to that point. But it's, it's not like the mayor has no say.
Sure.
What if you changed eight to be the mayor shall submit to council an itemized budget of revenues and expenditures prepared by city staff? I don't know. Something along those lines, if you want to leave it in.
Or submit the budget to the council.
That's true. You could shorten it even, even more. But then it's not in the ordinance who prepares it. Is that something we need?
It's drawn out that the city administrator prepares the budget.
Yeah, it's in the administrator's role, so.
All right. Well, then there you go. All right.
Anything else for, for the, the budget? Okay. And, and under that, it talks about the reviewing the police operations budget. So I think that falls right in line, that it's what he says, that the administrator handles that as well. So it really is a kind of duplicate there.
Does that have to remain by ordinance, though?
If the question is whether or not it could be handled in a general fashion like the previous entry, the answer is yeah. You could take that language out, it'd be part of the budget. State law doesn't require separate budgets for those departments.
Okay. And then just a. Okay, and then, just a reminder for that, if you're watching at home and didn't see the first part of the meeting, this is just a discussion of these items. It still would come forward in a committee of the whole for consideration, and then a recommendation to council. So, these are... It's just, this is a very broad discussion. We look at professional services as well, and under my requirements as mayor, it says It says, "The mayor shall, upon the order of the city council, secure for the city specialized and professional services not already available to the city. In executing the order of the city council, the mayor shall conduct himself in accordance with the city ordinances and laws of the state." And that's one, when I first took office, I had questions about this, like, what am I actually doing there if it's the administrator that's actually carrying that out? And is that a fair statement, Mr. Gaines, that you're... That's a big part of what you do?
So, that even goes down further to the departments that are securing those particular... They send out the RFPs, then they do the interview for consultants, or... And then they take the lowest bids. So, yes, that's a big part of what they do.
Yeah, so I don't do that, and would think it makes sense to remove that out of the mayor's responsibility, since it's assigned to the administrator.
Or to Frank's point, do you leave some of this stuff in here and oversee professional service agreements, or do you not? I mean, do we want to get down to the bare bones of it? The mayor's the CEO.
Yeah, that I'm responsible for reviewing everything.
Right.
And ensuring that the whole government functions, so is there a value, like, could it be missed if it's not listed specifically in there? Could a mayor not, like, not know to do that? Is that a fair assessment?
It does say in page 17, "With specific powers and duties, the mayor shall supervise all departments of the city and give direction to the department heads concerning the functions of the departments." So, this one, number 10, falls under the, you know, the functioning of the department, so he would have authority in some ways over it, correct?
Oversight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know that you actually have to leave it in as the mayor shall, although I'm not opposed to necessarily leaving it in to be more specific, but it seems like on page 17, under "be the specific powers and duties," that he has a pretty broad power as the CEO, so sometimes less is more.
Have you secured any professional service contracts, mayor?
I have not.
Let's take it out.
Anyone object to that, or is there consensus for it?
I object. I think the mayor should be the mayor and retain his powers. He was elected by the citizens, and that's the way we get the most representation.
Okay, I think you got some members' ears. On the next page, some of these already exist, signing licenses and permits, those I do already do, and I don't think I've countersigned a check yet. I don't think that's a common thing, but I don't see a problem in leaving it in there. For these other items that are listed under the city government page on page two, the only one that really stood out to me as something I would like to turn over to the administrator for the actual functioning is declaring a snow emergency. That's one that it's even a bit comical, like, I'll ask in the meetings, if our staff meetings, like, is this time to declare a snow emergency? Like, do we have enough? Because I know it's not going to be declared for... Like, I can't think of a political reason why a snow emergency wouldn't be declared, why I would turn one down. So, I feel that with the efficient functioning of government, it makes sense to have the administrator make that call. I just, I don't... I'm not a weatherman, and I'm not familiar with the functions to be able to say, and I shouldn't be familiar with the functions to say whether one should be declared or not. So, I'd be totally fine handing that over.
So, and ultimately, if for some reason there was a problem with that...
Yep.
You, as the mayor, still has the power, have the power to address that.
Override, or whatever. Yep. So, other ones in here, I don't have a strong sense either way in that.
I have a question, real quick, sorry. So, and maybe Mr. Gaines can weigh in on this. Let's say we had some snow, and there was confusion on whether to do a snow emergency, and the mayor said to the administrator, "Declare a snow emergency." Based on page one, give direction to the department heads, would you then have to technically declare the snow emergency? Or maybe that's a Kevin question?
Well, yes. The answer is yes. My supervisor just told me to declare a snow emergency. Now, the only reason that I wouldn't is because if the council voted four to three, no, you're not going to declare a snow emergency.
Fair enough. Okay, I just wanted to make sure people realize, you know, that while we are trying to clear up a lot of this, and we're trying to bring it to modern times, that the mayor still has a whole heck of a lot of power.
Well, all the power.
Unless council... Unless council says so.
Well, unless there's something that's by state law, has to go to somebody else, but I think for 99% of the cases, I get the final say on the executive, and then council can override.
Yes.
And that's how it should be. I always respect that council has the ultimate say.
I'd be okay with the snow emergency going over, as long as that's the case.
Okay, looking at... There's one aspect that I know we're kind of running short on time for tonight, but I'd like to talk about an important part with this, how the mayor interacts with the administrator. The way that it happens now, and I think it's a healthy way, or healthy organizational way to interact, is if I'm going to give direction to staff, or I want them to do a thing, I give that direction to the city administrator. And the city administrator can provide input, he can say whether something, like, how it's going to fit in the priorities, or how it can, based on current tasking that staff has. It provides excellent insight. So, I, even though it says in the code, under page one of seven on that code sheet, it says, "Specific powers and duties, the mayor shall supervise all departments of the city and give direction to department heads concerning the function of the departments." And that's a holdover from before we had an administrator. I think it makes sense, I'd love to discuss with council, changing that to say, "The mayor shall supervise the city administrator and give direction as necessary concerning the functions of the departments." Because the way I see it, the administrator is there to handle the day-to-day running of the government, the functioning, and I'm there to ensure, or the mayor's there, to ensure that the government is functioning properly. So, the council had the great idea of recommending to me that I attend the staff meeting on Monday morning, which has been fantastic, and hearing what's going on in the departments, but even there, I'm not going to provide specific direction, I'm going to work through the administrator, because I feel like that's why you hired the administrator, was to handle those professional functions, whereas I'm there more to provide overall direction and that oversight function. So, would... What are your thoughts about changing that first part to say that the mayor, was it, supervises the city administrator?
I think it works.
I think it works. It may be, this may be where Frank's logic of leaving some stuff in, maybe it could read about, "Shall supervise the city administrator and give direction to him based on the functions of departments." Maybe there's a clause in there that says to department heads, "If needed..." Would there ever be a situation that would arise, I'm trying to think of, where the mayor giving, you know, direction to a department head would come up? I don't know if there is, but that would be somewhere where I would say having it in there wouldn't necessarily hurt.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be willing to do it if necessary, especially if there is an emergency or something like that. I don't feel like I'm hamstrung to have to go through the administrator, and certainly getting reports and information. I talk to the department heads from time to time, but that's to find out information from them, and typically, if it's an email or whatever, the administrator CC'd on it. But having that sort of, the chain of command function properly, I feel like really requires that I, that the mayor be working through the administrator to make the staff do what the mayor wants, or what the council wants, make sure we're following, functions properly.
Is supervise the right word? I mean, technically, is it oversee the city administrator, or is supervise the word that we want in there? Kevin? Any insight on that?
Supervise connotes the idea of directing acts and judging performance.
Yeah, and since in the code, I do, as the mayor, write a performance evaluation on the administrator, I do feel like I'm his supervisor, so I'm comfortable with keeping supervise in.
Good.
I like the word supervise in this situation.
And along those lines, just with a point of clarification with the administrator's function, under page four of seven, it says, in part one, that the city administrator shall direct and supervise the administration of all departments, offices, and agencies of the city, except as otherwise provided by code or law. And that administration kind of threw me when I was on council, and then as mayor, like, if it's the directing and supervising administration of departments, I think of administration as being more sort of like the paperwork side of government, where he's actually in charge of the operations as well. So, I'd like to propose changing that from direct and supervise the administration of departments, I'd like to change that to direct and supervise the performance of all departments. And I'd like to know your thoughts on that. That's on page four of seven, it's at the top as the number one.
And change that to what?
Change it from direct and supervise the administration of all departments to direct and supervise the performance of all departments, which is really all-encompassing. Because I can't think of a part that he wouldn't be involved in the activities of departments.
Can I ask, I'm just curious about, if that's the case, what criteria, as a mayor, do we have criteria then that you use to make those evaluations, or is it just a personal gut feeling?
Evaluations of which part, Frank?
Well, anything, if, you know, you're evaluating the chief administrator or the administrator, do you have a strategy to do that, or is it just an elected way he's doing it? Or do we have his... Do we use an evaluation process that's pretty common?
If I understand right, is that for the evaluation of the city administrator? Like, how we do that, Frank? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so last year, the process that we followed was the surveys, where I asked how the council members perceived different aspects of the administrator's performance, and it was a fairly rigorous process, I felt, in order to ensure that we had all council buy-in. So, even though it says in the code that the administrator shall, or the mayor shall evaluate the administrator, and that's under, I think it's at the first part of that document for the administrator's side, still, yeah, it's section 2217. It says, "The mayor shall supervise the city administrator, and the mayor shall prepare an annual performance evaluation of the city administrator. Said evaluation shall be available for review by the city council, and the city administrator may request a closed meeting with the city council to discuss performance annually as provided by state statute." So, I do feel like that's between presiding over meetings and supervising the administrator. I feel like those are the two very most important things that I do as the mayor, because that sets the stage for everything else. But it doesn't say in here that the... It only says that the council has the ability to review those evals, but I think the council should be very involved in creating those evals as well, because you interact with the administrator. So, if you wouldn't mind, I'd...
I just want to make sure that there's...
Yep, go ahead, Frank.
I just wanted to make sure there's... Sorry. Go ahead.
We can hear you fine, Frank.
I just want to make sure that there is a process, you know, and I'm not saying there isn't one, but I just think it needs to be clear that with that much authority, it still needs to be based upon some criteria, as opposed to just not likening the guy, you know? And I'm not saying that's in this situation, but it could come to that. So, I think having, making sure there's a meaningful criteria used to make those decisions. I wouldn't want to just leave it up to the gut feeling of the mayor.
Right, absolutely.
So, I assume somewhere in the document, we've got that, that that's just the assurance I want to have anytime.
Right, yeah, and I would like to formalize that process a little more. We have a system in place for that evaluation, but it's, there's not a policy about it, it's just what we do. And I would like, you know, for the sake of the administrator and the council as well, just to know what to expect, to have that written out of how that process will work. So, that's a goal for this year.
So, that it doesn't come down just to not likening somebody. Know what I'm saying?
Yes, yes, very much so.
Mayor, back to your point about the number one on page four, direct and supervise the administration. When you put performance in there, I think it probably works, but as needed, the administrator is going to have some... Going to be giving direction to department heads if something needs to change within the department and whatnot. Administration, I feel like, covers that function of his job, I guess, if you will.
Okay.
Can I ask, Kevin, is there a legal reason or difference that would be between administration and performance? Would that legally read different?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Or could we just get rid of that entirely and say, "Direct and supervise all departments", and then it's definitely all-encompassing?
That seems a little more concise and clear, is direct and supervise all departments.
It does.
I like that.
Okay, and we are at about 6:50, or 5:55, so we'll want to regroup for another meeting at six. We're not quite all the way through this, but certainly we'll leave it open for a future work session, so that we can follow the rest of our time here. Is there anything that the council would want to bring up now for us to be able to consider for next time?
I'm just wondering if we don't... I mean, I think everybody's generally, I mean, with the exception of Councilman Sires here, we're all somewhat on the same page about making this function as the city operates today. Can staff go through this and bring a copy back to us with red lines showing, "Here's what we changed, here's what we didn't," rather than continuing the discussion on it? Sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page about wanting this to show exactly how we operate. So, I feel like staff's got the insight and the direction to know what to do with that. Just a thought.
Yeah, especially from the discussion so far, we can see where the council's kind of general desire is, so I'd be comfortable doing that. Maybe just to bring it as a committee of the whole item with the changes? I don't know if we'd want to go straight to council.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think committee of the whole would be good, because then we could still tweak some stuff if needed and talk about it more.
And have an opportunity to go over it, but rather than going through it in another meeting, and then having another meeting to go through it, can we approach it that way?
I'd be comfortable with a committee of the whole, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
So, mayor, what I just heard is staff's going to bring back in ordinance form, a red-line version to committee of the whole, the changes that we'd propose.
Right, and just in this section, and we'll include any other parts of the code, except there was one, that one part about the police budget, which isn't in the mayor ordinance or the administrator ordinance, so that probably would be added in as well, but everything else would be just specific to what we talked about, or is available tonight.
Mayor, I know we're crunched for time, but you and I have had the conversation about...
about the addition of the ombudsman portion. Did you want to talk about that just real briefly, so...
Yeah, since we haven't, I don't think we've talked about it with council yet. At the top of the mayor ordinance, it does mention that, it's like section 287a on the first page, it says, "The mayor shall supervise the conduct of all corporate officers, examine the grounds of complaint against them, and cause neglect to be corrected, et cetera." But I don't feel like that provides the same kind of title and authority that having a designation in the code about this being the city's ombudsman would do. And we don't have an ombudsman listed for the city. The ombudsman is typically in an organization and at the state level is responsible for doing reviews and, I'd say, investigation, but to look into complaints of waste, fraud, or abuse in the city. And it's something that I don't have, I don't have guidance on how to do that. I don't have a policy or a manual that tells me how to carry out that function. And I'd really like to create that this year, maybe as a new admin policy, so that it's clear for me or the next mayor to know, this is what, this is how you conduct an investigation, and how you review these in accordance with state law. And as part of that, I'd like to see an assignment in here of what the mayor's powers and duties are, of saying, "The mayor shall act as the ombudsman for the city," and whatever else is needed in that language. So any concerns about doing that this time, or like proposing in the document? So just to make it very clear on what, like, how I can, how a mayor goes about doing those process, those important processes. So, okay, so we'll add that in as well, draft language. I would say those are the three top things that I'm responsible for, is executive, chief executive officer, ombudsman, and the third one. So with that, anything else for tonight to discuss for this item? Okay, then we are adjourned until 6 o'clock. And do you still need five minutes, Denny?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So that'll be five minutes from now. I've got that time. The time is 5:58. So we'll pick up again at 6:03.